Good afternoon, everybody. I will call this month's Planning Commission meeting to order. I am Chairperson Zach Bruenke. Fran, you want to introduce yourself?
Fran Aaron, committee member.
I'm Kelly Rolz, Parks and Recreation Commission representative to this commission.
Tim Burkhonzer, commission member.
Timothy Zinn, regards to property on 32nd Street.
Okay.
Adam Tigen, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Shane Burkhardt, commission member.
Todd Furkey, City Orleans.
Dale Carlson.
I'm sorry, neighbor.
Excellent. Tom Rauma is just walking in.
Hi.
Okay. All right, we'll move into the first item of business, which is the approval of the report from the January 12th Planning Commission meeting. Any wishes regarding that report, commissioners?
I'm hoping we approve it.
Second? A motion by Shane and a second by Kelly to approve the report. Any discussion? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item two on our agenda, maps and plaits received. There were no other maps and plaits received. Moving to item number three. Item three is a public hearing on Plan 150097. Jerry Geiser, the applicant, is requesting a rezoning from B5, the general mixed-use district, to the R2, one-family and two-family residential district. Subject property is located at 1721 32nd Street North. With that, I will open the public hearing on that. And I'd entertain anyone wishing to speak either in favor of or opposed to rezoning.
I guess I want to throw in some clarification as to actually who owns the lot? It seems kind of vague here. Request from Jerry Geiser on behalf of Wood County. Who wants what? Who owns it? What exactly is going down here?
The staff or Jerry?
Yeah, the county owns the building. It was foreclosed upon.
So county owns it. There is an offer to purchase that is contained under any approval. So they have given Jerry permission to apply for the rezoning on their behalf. If it's approved, then it's expected the sale would go through. He would become the owner. Obviously, Wood County would sell it at that time. If the rezoning were to be denied, then Jerry would most likely get out of the contract and it would remain as being owned by Wood County until another purchaser comes forward.
For the second time, anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the request? And third and final time, anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed to the request? With that, I would close the public hearing and we'll move into item number four. Action of Plan 150097, Jerry Geiser. Staff report is in our packets. Are there any questions for city staff? Seeing no questions for city staff. Does the requestor, the applicant, want to speak to the request and maybe clarify?
Yeah, what Jerry wants to do is, I don't know if anybody's been in the building, any of the members here, but it used to be a commercial use for resort funders or fundsters or something like that. I was only in there once and to make it a residence, it's going to take a lot of work. I mean, there's a bathroom stool in there and a sink, no shower. I mean, where they got a kitchen cupboard there is about four foot long. I mean, the whole inside ESP got it and we done. He's going to have some money in it when it gets done. It wouldn't be me doing it.
Is this the building that at one time was pottery?
Yes.
Yes.
It was built for pottery.
Yes.
Well, it was. Yes, it was.
Yeah, the Parkers who lived to the house on the south side of it owned it.
Yeah.
Bill Parker, I believe.
Yeah.
And it's his intention to make it a single-family home?
Yes.
That kind of goes counter to your letter here. It says, "We'll make slight changes." I mean, now you're talking about major changes.
I don't know what he wants to do, but I think, you know, he's going to have to make some changes there. Move some rooms around, you know. You'd have to put a shower and a bathroom and, you know.
This will be a rental property?
Yes.
But right now, it's an island in itself and it's zoning. All the zoning around it is residential, right? So it would make it consistent with the rest of the area.
Yeah, everything south of the tracks is basically zone residential. When you get north of the tracks and you start encountering Village of Beeren and some other areas where there is some industrial or commercial, you get closer to 54. But anything in the city on its south side is, for the most part, all residential.
That's in the city now and it's got city utilities?
Yes.
Are there questions for the applicant or city staff?
For what it's worth, from a staff perspective, obviously, we recommend approval. Mainly because it probably made sense as a commercial building when it was someone that was living next to it and it was easy access. But just based on its location and some other things, to expect it to remain a viable commercial use in the future might be a little optimistic unless it is something small, again, like a standalone accountant or, you know, small business. But so based on the surrounding area and probably how this area will remain residential makes more sense, so that's why we recommend it.
Across the street, on the east side, there are commercial properties with houses owned with...
That's far.
To the north, yeah. Slightly. But yes, on the west side, I would agree that residence, residential zoning would be more appropriate for that.
Seeing no further requests or discussion items, I entertain a motion on the request from B5 General Mix to R2, one and two-family, for the property located at 1721 32nd Street North.
I'll make the motion and we grant this request.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve by Kelly, second by Fran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you all for being here. Enjoy your evening. Item number five is a public hearing on Plan 150108, City of Wisconsin Rapids. The applicant is requesting an amendment to Chapter 46, sign regulations of the Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Code. With that, I open the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor or against the request?
I guess I would probably speak in favor since I'm the one who brought it to you. As we discussed last month, when I just wanted to hear input, it's something that it's been in place for about a year and a half. We've discovered some minor issues on it as we've actually utilized it versus what I had drummed up in my mind when we originally drafted it. So this is mainly more of what I would call maintenance on the code, just trying to fix those issues, clarify some things that have come up. I don't think there's anything in here that we didn't discuss last month. But if there is anything you have questions on, you can have a turn.
I guess my only follow-up is, back in January, I had questioned for the 20 feet. And I looked into that and I consulted with my coworker this afternoon and made a discussion on that. And I'm thinking, I think a more appropriate would be a 12 or 15-foot. I have the ASC code here and we were looking at it. And basically, the only thing it would impact is the business signs that are allowed to go up to 35 feet. And we discussed and felt that at 12 feet, you know, the sign of any size, without actually looking at it, there's so many variables that it really should be looked at. And it would be more, a 12-foot would be more in line with the other thresholds that we have already in the code as opposed to an arbitrary 20 feet.
That was page?
Section 46, 61 and page 11.
They're saying you would prefer to read signs over 12 feet in height?
Yeah.
Providing calculations?
Because in looking with it, that it won't impact any of the residential signs or... The only ones that are allowed to go over that I saw was in the B2, General Business District.
For the most part, yeah, I think most of the other districts, you might have some industrial as well. I think industrial can go higher, but again, it's going to be a large commercial user versus smaller business or something like that.
And the reason I was saying 12 or 15, at 15 feet, the wind, the provisions in ASC 7 start becoming variable and a lot of different parameters go into it. And that's done with the whole back of research. So basically, that is a threshold. So from an engineering perspective, I would say 15. But to be consistent within the code that we have here, I think 12 feet, because we already have that as a threshold and a cutoff point, that makes it pretty clear so we don't create any more ambiguous gray areas of that. So.
Sounds amenable.
Yeah, and like I said, we did basically just kind of pick a number. So if there's something that has a rationale to it, I would actually prefer to have something that has rationale.
Well, and for the sake of just some of the other, we've noticed, we talked about a couple of that that have tipped over and those things, it's better to be err on the side of caution and public safety, I think, than not.
Yeah, and it's hard to be prescriptive in, so you can just say, okay, you can put a sign out. Well, it depends on your soil conditions, what, the location of things around it that, you know, you're going to get different wind tunneling effects and that kind of stuff. So I think that it'd be better to bring that down and just have it be somebody that knows what they're doing look at it for public safety.
So do you find with that from a staff perspective?
I had another comment, Adam. I think it was on the third, the second bullet on 4651, which I guess it would be page nine? It might actually be on page 10.
Yeah, I think that actually changed to page 10.
Yeah, and it was related to the construction signs. We've thankfully, or not thankfully, had a lot of these and still have too many of them in my mind as it relates to when the sign should be required to be removed. We've got in there, as it says, I just have to make sure, is it for no more than 90 days?
Right.
I would maybe offer within 30 days after work is completed, or no, I'm sorry, upon completion, not to exceed, succeed. I guess I've got two thoughts written on that. Trying to remember what my thought process was. I guess I'd be in favor of a much tighter timeframe. 93 months is a long time after construction activity has been completed for somebody to leave a sign out in their yard, is my opinion. I'd be curious to know what others feel on that subject.
Well, the way you discussed it here, you know, some of those signs have been out all winter long.
And they will be out all spring?
Yeah, they will be out all spring.
And our ordinance control officer will be having to have conversation or pull them, right?
Yeah, it's amazing how many were pulled and thrown out already.
And there's still so many of them, yeah.
Maybe we could say something about prior to construction, a certain length of time prior to construction and then a certain length of time after construction they come down.
So you've got in here, in case shall renovation sign be in place for more than 90 days total?
Correct.
And then I think to Fran's point, maybe doing the front end and a back end, well, I guess you would be covered there.
Yeah, so the most it would be would be 90 days prior. The way it's worded now, it's supposed to be removed when the renovation work is complete.
Okay.
And in case shall exceed 90 days.
All right.
So if you think 90 days is too much, we could reduce it to 60. So that would mean two months prior and then the day it's done, it should be pulled. And the way we attract that is basically when we would close out the permit, that sign needs to come down.
Oh, okay.
So there would be kind of a trigger there to be able to monitor when it should come down. Not saying that's going to be perfect because someone may not call for an inspection and we may not get to it for, you know, a couple of weeks after the project's actually complete. But I think...
They probably don't take our permits anyway. Do they put those little signs up?
Not for the signs, but for the work.
Yeah.
So I'm saying when the work is done, that's when we would tell them. When we finalize the permit, we would say, "You need to pull down the sign as well." So at least there would be some communication there.
Others have thoughts about the timeframe?
And you addressed it much better than I did what was previous to this.
Yeah, I was kind of silent on it. So we kind of, it was kind of one of those things that was always kind of permitted in the city. If someone was working on a house, you put the little sign up and kind of look the other way. So I think it's better to have.
Or wasn't it something to self-police themselves?
Right. Most people get sick of a sign in their yard, either mowing around it in the summer or mowing it around it. My contractor asked, I said, "No, I don't want to mow around this sign." So less is more usually, I guess, when it comes to temporary signs. So I would be fine tightening it up.
How did you have it done?
Well, I'm just saying, as far as, you know, you're saying the sign would be removed upon completion and that's, you know, everybody's got their own idea, I guess, when everything's completed. You know, when it has to be, if you say, re-inspected or whatever. You know, I drive by property on Second Avenue now where the roof is half ripped off and they got a tarp over top of it. So they started on that in early December, you know, and still got a tarp on it and only half the shingles are on it. So, you know, if you're putting a time limit as far as 90 days or whatever, I think that's real hard to police or to, you know.
Yeah, like I said, it's the easiest thing to enforce because there are so many. Obviously, in a typical year, it would be much easier to police because most of them don't put these out. Or if they do, it is really when they're just there. And then when the crew goes, they pick up the sign and go. So we are in kind of an unusual situation now. It's kind of hard to say how it will go in.
I'm more or less looking for some leverage when a resident calls and complains or the neighbors complaining about the sign across the street, of my sign or something. We've got a little bit of coverage, say, "Well, it was out about this time." 90 days was really two months ago already now. So it's more of, I think, just so we've got something in the ordinance from a policing standpoint. I don't think, I wouldn't imagine Ray is going to be proactively addressing these. It's probably complaint basis.
Yeah, or it's an obvious one where the, like I said, the permit's been done for a couple of months and just making a pull at that point.
At least because you have basis to go off of.
Because we didn't have anything under the last edition, right?
Yeah.
Some timeframe after the work is complete.
I think it's one of those things that 90 days, we're still getting a lot of complaints and you guys are still getting annoyed with them out there. We can always come back and tighten it up even further. Or, I mean, you can conceivably say they're not permitted at all. Something that gets completely out of control and then Ray just pulls them like whenever he finds them.
I like the, I mean, that's a compromise, I think, to your point. I personally can live with, I don't know if others have strong feelings about those. I just think they look like clutter all around town the way they are. But if it's a 90-day thing, we want to be somewhat friendly to the contract world. That's okay to you.
Well, because it's not just the out-of-town contractors too. I mean, we do have local contractors that do need advertising.
That's a good point. Any other comments on the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, move into action on Plan 150108, City of Wisconsin Rapids. Any further, I'd entertain a motion first on that.
I move, we move forward with the way it's written.
A motion by Fran to accept the edits and the, pose edits in the sign, Chapter 46 sign regulations, or second?
Does that include my 12?
Yeah, okay.
Include the edit?
The 12-foot, right. I will second that.
Second by Kelly. Further discussion? Anybody have any further discussion? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you all for your comments on that and review. Item seven is discussion on the update of the City of Wisconsin Rapids Outdoor Recreation Plan. I've put this on the agenda for a couple of reasons. And Adam, we'd better further articulate them, but I'll indicate just in a general sense. There's a number of, I would say, activities afoot with inside City Hall that we're trying to figure out, are they reflected in our planning documents? I mean, obviously, this was revised, or this was passed in, what, adopted in December of '11? So it's obviously hadn't had a couple of years. I mean, we refer to it from time to time, but Park and Rec is starting to take a look at it to say, is there activities and capital projects reflected accurately in here? This came about as the comprehensive plan was done, what, in 2010, Adam? Firmly adopted in 2010?
The overall company?
Right.
Yeah, same.
So. So reality is time changes and so we're just trying to do an update for relevancy purposes and to make sure that our activities and action is accurately reflected in the plan. So we're not operating too out of scope of this. The other driver is, we're actually going to be applying for a DNR stewardship grant that is a substantial grant at some point to help fund some of our riverfront, waterfront enhancements that we're talking, or conceptually talking about. And those things needed to be reflected in our plan for DNR to even consider the grant application. The grant, we're hoping to get submitted off to the state May 1st as a deadline, so sometime in April. And there's activities that have been completed in here too that want to reflect that we're actually progressing, not just sitting on some of the recommendations. So Adam, are there things you want to add?
I think that's a pretty good overview, just, I mean, some of the major changes. The map that's on page four, that's the one, photo one. This is the major map in one. This incorporates basically the light path plan that was approved by the council. It was last fall, I believe. Basically showing a lot of the shared right-of-way type plans and on-pavement markings, really expanding as well as some long-term trail improvements. So this has been pretty comprehensively updated and it has already been run by the council on that one. So that's kind of a major change there. You can obviously see the goal is to actually get a network that can get you pretty much to most schools and parks, either on shared right-of-way or off-street. And then the majority of the rest of the changes take place in Chapter 4, which starts on page 16. It's basically pages 16 and 17, I think. So again, this was more of an update on what, this was done by the Park and Rec Department. They kind of went through and said, "What's accurate, what's not?" And then for the grant itself, those, that recommended change occurs in basically pages 27, 28, 29. And that's where we're trying to call more attention to some future trail extensions and that type of thing. So it's definitely not a comprehensive overview. It wasn't, it's more seen to clean things up. Obviously, in another, probably three or four years, it would probably be at the point where we would completely redo the process, where we go out and we get public input and do the surveys and have the open houses and really try to make sure that the vision itself is still correct. This is a lot more of just kind of technical cleanup. So, but we did want you to be aware because it does tie into some other projects that the city is taking on.
So not to say public input is not warranted in the way that a formal, complete rewrite would.
Right.
You know, if you've got folks that you know that are passionate about some of the city's Park and Rec planning, I mean, the Park and Rec Commission will be taking this up. I'm not sure if a meeting was rescheduled for this week or not, but...
I think it's the 11th.
It's the 11th.
I think it's hard to be the 11th.
Okay, but make sure, you know, it's reflected and we've got plenty of copies. We can distribute or share a link out. It's also available on the city's website if you want to send it off. Adam, your copies, you may want to, or your edits, you may want to email commissioners if you can, a link or a copy of the edited.
Oh, Park and Rec, yeah, they're all in here.
Yeah, it's the ones that you, ones in red you're saying. But I'm saying for the sake of, if anybody wants to get input from people, this is the most recent draft edited version, drafted edited version.
Yeah, and I think this is what went to Park and Rec.
Okay.
The same document that was provided to Park and Rec.
That meeting was rescheduled, I think, for the 11th, so, yeah. So I think that's, those are kind of the comments, specific sort of. It felt like it was important to bring to Planning, the Planning Commission, because, you know, one committee should be knowing what the other committee is doing. Obviously, we've got our rep from Park and Rec, but without a meeting on the agenda, you really can't speak about it, at least not legally. And I want to make sure we're having those kind of consistent discussions across committees and all that.
Yeah, and if there is something that you identified that you would like brought forward, I believe I will probably be at Park and Rec meeting on the 11th. So if you shoot me an email or something, I can certainly be there and just bring up those topics at that time. There's something that you would like added or changed.
Are you taking any questions on this now, right here?
Sure, if I even know the answer, I can answer.
Right, but I think there was quite a lot of remodeling and alterations done at Witter Field for the rafters and just wanting to know who's paying for that. Is that all city-funded or is the rafters contributing at all? They did show a little bit of contribution as far as some of their hot dog stand type.
Yeah, I believe that it depends on what the project is. But all those major projects have come before the Park and Rec Commission and they're basically done on a case-by-case basis. So the painting, I believe that was city funds completely, for example. The Rat Trap project, the elevated deck, that was 100% actually the rafters who funded that one.
The accessible seating area was 100% rafters' foundation, their foundation. The Leaks Foundation paid for that.
And kind of the deck area, I believe that was rafters as well.
What a scoreboard was shared.
And lighting was shared.
Some of this newer stuff that's being proposed as far as replacing the Oakfield fans and putting up new netting in front of the grandstands and stuff like that, you know, safety netting?
That's all hot off the press. And at this point, we're still negotiating with them. I would say even on Friday afternoon, Vern and I spoke about netting and, you know, trying to secure commitments, cost share and those things. But nothing has been decided and I'm almost positive that everything would go to finance and property based on, because nothing was budgeted specifically for it, nor was Park and Rec really abreast of any outlet, park-outlet monies. I mean, there's some gray area there, but ultimately, the council would have to approve. All these improvements are outside their lease. That's the trigger essentially. It was identified in there and the administration doesn't have approval to move forward with those things unless we've got council's approval for them. But on that point, I mean, from a plan standpoint, we should probably include some of the plan improvements they've got coming forth this year with some additional seating areas and those things. Those should be, at least for Witter's sake, be included in here.
Yeah, just kind of scan through, they don't really, that's one of those parts where they didn't really update it very much, even though a lot of work has been done.
It's a very elementary plan compared to others I've seen. I mean, Regional Planning Commission is very, their scope is very, very defined, we'll call it that.
It's enough to meet requirements and not a lot of frills.
Yeah, not a great amount of visioning either, but that's what we've got. That's why we're editing it. Any other comments or questions on that?
This was just brand-new in 2012?
It was an update, I think. I don't think it was a complete. It was more than just an update, but...
Oh, my work went ahead of this thing.
Yeah. I thought I seen some earlier.
It's even bigger, but I didn't stem back from 2006 or 2008 or something. There was a...
Probably every five years, I think, you can take a pretty good look at it.
Yeah.
2005 to 2010, it's a complement to, oh yeah, there you go, we've got it there too. It's actually bottom of page two, it talks about, that's one of the statewide one. Okay, any further discussion on that item? I guess, so any feedback you get, city staff, and so to city staff or myself and the Park and Rec Committee, Commission meeting the 11th, their inclusion of those pieces for ultimate grant application, hopefully in April. Okay.
I did hand out just an FYI, I have something coming forward next month. I got you a copy.
Yeah.
It's just because it's kind of an unusual request.
Oh, yeah.
It's another farmer's market, it's being proposed for the area. Our ordinance requires, they don't have to get a permit to do a farmer's market, but it does have to be a recognized city farmer's market. And so the way we're interpreting that is it would go through Planning Commission for review since it's in the zoning ordinance, the regulations, and then it would go onto the council for approval. So like I said, it's kind of an unusual request just because we don't get a lot of them. So I wanted to give you a heads-up on it. Obviously, no formal action can take place because it's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to give you an FYI on that. And if you have any questions on why it has to go through this procedure or anything like that, feel free to give me a call.
Yeah, and then we met on it, city staff, we thought, you know, if there's a complimentary piece, we'd want the other farmer's market to be fully aware of the city's involvement since we did sort of sanction that one as well. That was the other kind of precedence.
And I did talk with the person who's kind of spearheading this and they have been in contact with the mall manager for several weeks already, just trying to clarify competition and to enhance and be on the...
So we'd still have the two, we'd have the one at the mall and the one at Aspiris.
But it'd be an update.
Is it still the one at the hospital or is it on?
This would be the current Aspiris doctors clinic location.
And where on?
On 54.
On 54.
Is where they're proposing at at this point. So.
So that'll appear on our next agenda, most likely. Are there other agenda items, future agenda items you're thinking of, Adam?
Major home occupation for a bread business or gluten-free pizza crust, I believe, is what they're making. So that will be coming forward and I think there is another potential rezoning, which will be, I don't know how that one will go, because that one is... which will be, I don't know how that one will go, because that one is kind of near Pepper and Ave. It's a couple of blocks off of Ave, so it's one of those questionable ones, so.
We may have some of like the waterfront plan, some of those component discussions coming forth, maybe April, May timeframe too, just to throw on your radar as well.
Depending on this fall.
Yep.
Okay, Chairman.
Is it appropriate to ask a question about the pool, about anything happening with the, with the pool in Wisconsin Rapids?
I understood as of my conversation Friday afternoon with Brett from the Y, that we will have an answer from Aspiris, hopefully this week. That's the, it was pushed back with two times down the last two weeks. So he was confident that Wednesday or tomorrow, we'd have, have an answer. And to what extent they go public or any of that, I don't know. I don't know that yet. So if there is anything, I definitely will push it your way too as I hear of it and they want us to share it.
On that note too, with the, this outdoor recreation plan, it's spoken there too of engaging with other municipalities, Bearden and Grand Rapids, Port Edwards, as far as collaborative effort for that. Has anything ever?
Primarily because of funding. If they were coming to the table with dollars, I mean, I will say this. The stakeholder, the YMCA's committee, has discussed with other municipalities. We didn't feel like we were a leader to be able to convene that discussion, but because it wasn't our project, was, I guess, the short answer to that. But the Y is using, actually because of Port Edwards Pool's close this year, the Y has negotiated with access to the entire Y facility for the Village of Port Edwards for this coming year. So to that extent, there's, I mean, we definitely want to reflect something like that in there if it's partnering with another partner, not necessarily just municipalities, but other key stakeholders, school district, others in there. That's a good point. I mean, there definitely has been progress, I would say. It's just not physical progress in that regard, more, more on a conversational level that should be reflected too in the, in the outdoor rec plan update.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move?
Motion by Fran.
Sorry.
Second by Turkey. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes. Thank you all for being here. We'll see you next month.